Clear rides for Fledge Legion. Fledge Legion?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Move approval of journal in the meeting of March 1st, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries. Journal is approved at this time. Make a motion to suspend the rules in order for... Is the county exec... Why don't we move on to further business, then we'll come... Come back for that. So let's go on to bid openings. We have no bid openings. Move on to communications. We'll get right with yous.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, second and sixth district.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested party.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Receiving files, same motion to item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, first district.
Receive, file, and refer to the County Councilor, to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Elections Commissioners.
So ordered. At this time, make a motion to suspend the rules in order for the presentation of proclamation by County Executive Steve Stanger to Howard Fields, Principal of Coke Elementary School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries. Rules are suspended. County Executive, read the proclamation.
Sure, I will. Thank you very much. Is Mr. Fields here? Mr. Fields, how are you this evening? Good. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, Chairman. Coke Elementary School's mission is to successfully educate all students in an environment that promotes respect, responsibility, and safety while maintaining high academic and behavioral expectations. And whereas fourth and fifth graders at Coke Elementary produce Coke TV, which provides a platform for student opinions and ideas, and gives them experience doing research, writing, speaking, interviewing, and having fun as they apply what they are learning. And I'll also mention, I was on that... On your network. It was wonderful. Great interviewers. Thank you very much. And whereas the students at Coke TV won first place in the elementary video category in the Gifted Association of Missouri's 2016 Video Contest, in which they produced a public service announcement about gifted education. And whereas the students of Coke TV will be recognized for their entry on February 24th, 2016, at the State Capitol in Jefferson City, Missouri, and will speak to legislators about their comments on gifted education programs in Missouri. Therefore, I, Stephen V. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, congratulate the students of Coke Elementary School, and hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 24th, 2016, as Coke TV Day. And as I said, I report this to the council. I went to Coke, and I was on the program. I was interviewed. And I have to tell you, it's a wonderful program. And it really allows a really unique participation in this process that they've created. And I was really proud to be part of it. I'm really proud to present you with the proclamation today. But it is really special. And two individuals from my administration spend a lot of time with Coke kids, Allison Blood and Cordell Whitlock. And it's been a really great experience. So I'm really proud to give you the proclamation this evening.
First and foremost, we need, and then councilmembers, executives, city, as well as the community, everything that we do at Coke Elementary School is an extension of the review board of the school district, which is for us to restore academic honor. This was an opportunity last year for our students to really embrace and work on their public speaking skills. With the help of Allison Blood and obviously Cordell Whitlock, we were able to emerge into something that's very special. Our students are having a fantastic time. It was easier in the beginning to really teach them things, but they're actually surpassing me, so I'm needing some assistance with showing them some things. They're having a lot of fun, and they are continuing to learn. At the end of the day, they're excited to come to school, and that is the biggest thing that we are happy about. I don't want to obviously be the only person speaking, so, Naya, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Coke TV is very inspiring for younger students who also want to join in our school, and people younger will like look up to us and like, "Oh, my gosh, this is really good." And then some people come to our schools, like, "I wish I had the opportunity that you kids have right now." So it's very grateful to have this opportunity. And most kids don't get a thing to do like this at their school. So thank you, Mr. Field.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
First, I would like to thank Mr. Fields for being the best person to give everybody on Coke TV this opportunity that anybody else couldn't have. So give him a hand. When I first came to this school, I thought I would never have this opportunity. I like really enjoyed it last year. It wasn't even Coke TV last year, it was public speaking. I really enjoyed being with Ms. Allison, Mr. Whitlock, and we really enjoyed it. And we even have new members. We all are our team, and we all enjoy what we're doing. And we have a lot of students who want to be a part of it. We like being on Coke TV because not only do we get to be on TV, but we also get to go to places that we never went before, and we get to meet new people. First, I would like to say thank you for being a part of this also, and making this a holiday and being better.
Okay, back to other communications.
Item number five, third district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries.
Item number six, fifth district.
Same motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, first district.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and a copy of the report be sent to the city of Pahma.
So ordered.
Item number 10, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 11, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 13, third district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Moving on to the add-ons, Mr. Chair. Item number one, second district.
Receive, file, and the sale of bonds be approved as recommended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I say motion carries.
Item number two, second district.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered. County Executive?
Nothing special to the report this evening.
Ready? Move on to... No reports of special committees. Move on to public forum.
We have six speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's please keep our comments to three minutes.
Our speaker is Pat Holtermann.
Good evening. I'm Pat Holtermann-Homas, President and CEO of Youth in Need, which is a nonprofit social service agency that works with children, youth, and families throughout the greater St. Louis area. And this is Robin Bell, who's a Program Manager at our crisis shelter. Did you know that every night in the St. Louis region, more than 1,500 young people are living in unsafe situations or even on the streets? That's who Youth in Need helps, and that's who we've been helping since 1974. We provide both emergency and long-term housing, crisis outreach, along with mental health and other support services. We also provide professional counseling, free of charge, to thousands of at-risk youth in St. Louis County. That helps these kids be successful in school and helps keep families together. Our mission is to bring safety and hope to the region's most vulnerable children, youth, and families, so they can achieve their goals and build a positive future. And we absolutely could not do this without the support and partnership of the Children's Service Fund. So we're really just here tonight to thank you for that. We have many wonderful stories and a lot of data that shows our impact, but I'm going to turn it over to Robin for just a few seconds to tell you about just one of the young people that she's worked with.
Jasmine started with Youth in Need when she reached out for counseling services in her school, because she was going through a traumatic past with her family, her father. And she soon started to get support from our schools, from Youth in Need. She then got support from a teacher at school, but the support was not a good support. He ended up, you know, involving himself in a sexual inappropriate relationship with her, and then from there moved her out of town with him. Well, when she got out of town, she was lost, didn't know what to do, because he began to physically abuse her. She then reached out to Youth in Need, and we helped her get back on the bus. We helped her get back to our shelter. And within 30 days of being at our shelter, she's now obtained a job. She's working with a crisis therapist to get help with her past issues, and she also got into our supported living apartments, where she's living independently on her own now, all within 30 days of coming to our shelter. So without the service that you give us, we would not be able to give youth like Jasmine.
Yeah, and just to underscore that, without these services that we couldn't provide without you, these kids would often be lost to the streets, they'd be incarcerated, victims of sex trafficking, or even dead. So thank you for your service to the community, and thank you for your support through the Children's Service Fund.
Thank you very much for your help.
Can I say something, Council?
Yes.
Chair? I just wanted to thank you all publicly, because I've worked with you for years at another agency where I was the Executive Director, and I know the work that you do and how much is needed in the community. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew Kuhn.
Good afternoon. Evening. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Kuhn. I'm spokesperson for Missouri Accountability Project. I reside at 5340 Villa Angelo Lane, Hazelwood, Missouri. I'd first like to thank Dr. Page, Dr. Khan, Mr. Harder, the council, and all volunteers for conducting the respiratory health survey, despite inclement weather. I'd like to thank Dr. Page for informing the specifics of that survey at the Wildwood Nuclear Symposium, and Mr. Stanger for your support of the federal effort to trust FUSREP with remediation of radiologically impacted materials in Michigan. St. Louis stands as a gateway to social and environmental justice, despite walls of resistance crumbling beneath the weight of accountability and transparency. One such brick in the wall for residents, workers, students, and shoppers around North County is a nasal ranger standard for enforcing odor nuisance violations. The standard set by industry and environmental interests, originally intended for agricultural application, has fallen short of protecting quality of life and health for this community suffering offensive, obnoxious, intrusive, and obscene odors. It is imperative that the entire council work to find a means... Work together to find a means of tightening odor nuisance regulations by any method deemed appropriate. I would like to thank members of the council already engaged on this issue. We, the people, are the stakeholders of this region. We invest into our families, our communities, our properties, our education, and our shared resources. We, the people, stand the most to lose from industrial negligence. A government of the people, by the people, for the people should represent our interests. Corporations... Corporations are not people. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks.
Next speaker is Abir Moten.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Abir Moten, and I am homeless and advocating for all the homeless and represent Global Bridge, the Future Fusion for Life Foundation. I'm back at Salvation Army Family Haven, giving it another chance they're still embezzling. But we have a petition that we're presenting for those of us who are homeless and others. It is saying that we are asking St. Louis County Executive and all of St. Louis County Council members to give all of the homeless in St. Louis County, including the ones at Salvation Army Family Haven Warming Shelter, an extension to stay there because we have nowhere else to go. We are homeless and desire and need to be in a shelter all year round, including warming and cooling sheltered times, until we all get permanent housing. We are all able survivors who want stability housing. This is a month of March. God can make a band of watching guards or angels to march before us and behind us. We are the homeless, our believers. We all hope to enter the paradise of delight. We want you all to help straighten all of our means of living. We want you to guard all of the homeless, especially the women. Guard their chastity and grace. Stop them from being exploited and trafficked. Stop them from being raped. Stop them from creating intentional bastards. We all desire to be dutiful to God, but we swear by the Lord of all 365 points of sunrise and sunset in the east and the west that surely we are able. But you need to replace all corrupt employees who are conniving, deceiving, and want to turn things around by trying to make us look disabled so that they can trick us, neglect us, and outrun us. Replace them. Replace them by others enthusiastically better than them. We are not to be outrun. Many of these deceivers have intentionally plotted a mighty plot and intentionally led many astray. They are wicked disbelievers. They increase mankind into sin and transgression. The Lord intends for all of us a right path. Grant us resources in abundance and of all of our children to be by our side. Help make life smooth and comfortable for us. Do not let agencies feed us foods that could hurt us. Save all the homeless from the evil of every day and night. Give them rest in a light of beauty and joy. Don't let the homeless be in the excessive heat of the sun nor the excessive bitter cold. Replace all of the employees who have transgressed all bounds of disbelief, oppression, and evil deeds against... Evil deeds of disobedience to God. Help make our paths easier for us. Do not let any homeless remain in the darkness. The words of God and His guidance are not the words of outcast Satan. Do not neglect people and cause them to die and to be put in the graves. Treat all the homeless with dignity and respect. Remove all employees who are conflicts of interest to us. Do not keep the employees who intentionally keep us and intentionally put us in oppression, homelessness, and hardships. We, the homeless of St. Louis County, desire the St. Louis County Executive, Steve Stanger, and all the members of the council to come and visit and meet with us. Come spend the night with us.
There's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Well, we appreciate if you can help make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abir.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Jim Hamilton.
Hello again. My name is Jim Hamilton. I represent an organization called CORE. We're in opposition to zoning request PC 2829-15. I spoke last week, and after that, I had a meeting with the Director of Planning. After getting that call, I felt like perhaps I was being called into the principal's office. That wasn't the case at all. They were very informative, very helpful to us. But having said that, when we left the meeting, the same two issues are still there. And in fact, now I have an understanding that the Director of Planning believes that these are issues, but they're not as significant as we feel that they are. So each of you received, or should have received today, an email from me. I suspect you may not have. It's bizarre I had time to read it, so I intended to read it to you as well tonight. But I think I'm going to cover one other issue, and it has to do with, from the very beginning of this process, many people understood that the existence of a cell tower on this property would create some problems with the overall project. And what we feel is that, should this project move forward, it is in fact in violation of the conditions that were placed on that property when the conditional use permit was issued. This is that document that issued that conditional use permit. And if I might, I want to just read a couple of sentences in here. And I want to get... Make sure that you understand, or hopefully you'll understand, that these things mean exactly what they're written as. Under the conditions, this is the attachment C, where the conditions for the conditional use permit are written. Access to this facility shall be provided by a private roadway surface to St. Louis County specifications and connecting to Yeager Road. That's what it says. I don't think there's anything unclear about that. Several paragraphs later, it says, "If roadways in this petition are to be private roadways, these roadways shall remain private forever. Maintenance of private roadways shall be responsibility of the property owners or trustees forever." I think that's pretty clear as well. The proposal, as it stands, does not have any of this in there. It is in violation of those conditions. One other thing. In Section C, Paragraph 11, "Any transfer of ownership or lease of property shall include in the transfer or lease agreement a provision that the purchaser or lesssee agrees to be bound by the conditions herein set forth and included in the approved development plan for the property." So if this transfer did happen, then the developer knew about it and decided to ignore these provisions. So here we are now down the road where we have consistently said that the two issues now are that the density, the number of lots, the number of homes that want to build, is too great, and in fact is way out of character for the surrounding area, both close in and larger proximity. And that was it. I'm sorry.
Wrap it up.
My time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next speaker is Dora Owens.
First, I want to say, give an honor to God. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Last Tuesday, you are passed a beautiful piece of legislature, and that was the PDMP. The next day, I was arrested just for trying to guard my post office box. And when I was handcuffed, the police officer asked me, "Have you seen a psychiatrist before?" And I said, "No, I have not." I didn't tell him he used to work for Dr. Goldraine. And I said, "Why would I need to see a psychiatrist?" He said, "Will you take any medication that we prescribe for you?" I said, "No, I don't think I need any." So he said, "Well, we're taking you to the Mercy." So they took me to Mercy, and we need you to have a 96-hour psychological evaluation." And I smiled, I said, "That's okay." And I went, and I stayed for 24 hours. And when I got there, I met with Dr. Jean, I believe it's his name, and he said, "I'm going to have to put you on medication." I said, "For what, sir?" He said, "For lack of sleep and for anxiety." And I said, "I don't suffer from either of those things, so if I could decline from that, I would appreciate it." Why am I sharing this with you? I am concerned... He did prescribe it anyhow. Is this part of the PDMP that you are passed? No? Because I thought it would take another step, either you take him to the joint commissioner or to the public of the county to vote for it to go further. But that's what's happening. And that's just wanted to share that with you. God bless you.
Final speaker this evening is Brian Hughes.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian Hughes. I am a father of five children, four girls, and one boy, exactly in that order. And I am speaking on you on behalf of my business that I proposed to open Mystic Grill. The business that I'm allowing you to... That I'm proposing, that you all entrusted me, that I will employ very good citizens, some that are underemployed, some that are unemployed, and provide the skills for them that they can provide better lives for themselves and their families. And then also in the process, provide tax dollars for the county. And I ask that you... I testify that I will take this responsibility to also not only just assist myself and my family, but also the community. And I'd like to thank you for your time, and you guys have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
No more speakers. Mr. Chair.
Introduction to bills.
Bill number 47, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a lease agreement with First Tanger Investors LP for lease of 8.59 acres of land located at the Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number 48, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a donation of $5,000 from Enterprise Holdings for a family court foster-parent appreciation event, appropriating the donation for support of said event. Bill number 49, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $5,500 from Youth in Need and appropriating same for support of acquisition of student bus passes and personal items for youth involved with the family court moving into residential care. Bill number 50, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a fuel sales contract and up to three subsequent renewals with the city of Beverly Hills. Bill number 51, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a special warranty deed transferring excess acquisition property located at 6375 Hawkins Road to Missouri American Water Company. Bill number 52, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept the amount of $700,000 from Worldwide Technology Incorporated, appropriating same for support of improvements to Westport Plaza Drive and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number 53, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with St. Louis University School of Medicine to perform services in connection with the Gateway Geriatric Education Center Geriatrics Workforce Enhancement Program. Bill number 54, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara, and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with QPIC LLC for administration of a lean government training program for management employees of St. Louis County. Bill number 55, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan, Page, and Harder, and ordinance amending St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R2 Residence District and the R3 Residence District as provided herein. PC 28-15, Pinnacle Land Development Company LLC. Bill number 56, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan, Page, and Harder, and ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to a planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R3 Residence District, subject to conditions. PC 29-15, Pinnacle Land Development LLC. Bill number 57, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance amending St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the NU Non-Urburn District, the FPNU Flood Plain Non-Urburn District, the R-1A Residence District, and the FPR-1A Flood Plain Residence District as provided herein. PC 03-16, Bride Keifer Creek LLC. Bill number 58, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to a planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R1A Residence District and the FPR-1A Flood Plain Residence District, subject to conditions. PC 04-16, Bride Keifer Creek LLC. Bill number 59, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance designating a portion of St. Louis County, Missouri, as a redevelopment area, approving the Afton Plaza Tax Increment Financing TIF redevelopment plan and the redevelopment project described therein, making findings related thereto, adopting tax increment financing with respect thereto, and authorizing certain actions by county officials. Bill number 60, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance approving various agreements in connection with the Afton Plaza Tax Increment Financing TIF redevelopment plan. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Please, and that will be the order.
Bill number 45, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Second. I move to perfect bill number 45.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries. Bill number 45 is perfected.
Bill number 46, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number 46.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say motion carries. Bill number 46 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to hold bill number 116.
The order.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Erby. I move for final passage of bill number 32.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 32, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 32 is finally passed.
Bill number 37, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of bill number 37.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 37, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 37 is finally passed.
Bill number 38, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of bill number 38.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 38, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 38 is finally passed.
Bill number 39, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of bill number 39.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 39, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 39 is finally passed.
Bill number 40, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 40.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 40, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 40 is finally passed.
Bill number 41, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 41.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 41, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 41 is finally passed.
Bill number 42, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I take it up for final passage of bill number 42.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 42, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 42 is finally passed.
Bill number 43, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to hold bill number 43.
So ordered.
Bill number 44, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 44.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
No.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 44, there are five ayes and two noes.
Bill number 44 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair. We have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to adopt resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.